Good evening. My name is Matthew Lawless. I serve as Scottsville's Town Administrator. This is the meeting recording and streamed for a special meeting of Scottsville Town Council. Today is Tuesday, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is held in compliance with Virginia Freedom of Information Act and the state's open meeting laws. Our meeting is open to the public at the town hall located at four oh one Valley Street in Scottsville. We also have opportunities for the public to view the meeting by phone or online. Because it's a special meeting of the town council focused on the budget, there is not a public hearing or public comment period. But the results of the work are open to everyone to see. We are still getting prepped for our meeting and the posted start time is seven P M. That's four minutes until now. If you're viewing the meeting in the future on the recording, thank you. I'll mute this line while we finish setting up incoming order. You can skip ahead on your playback. Three minutes and you'll see us come to order. Thank you.
If you have something to say, I wish to say it stand up now and make it short and sweet because we're not going to be here all night. Okay, here you go, one, the Lounged Garden, the mayor's court, which is no different than what I had at the council meeting last week. Although it also is nice to have our newest member with us, who will be official tomorrow. And then we're back full strength. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is is talk about the budget. Those of you who've been through this before know what it's all about, those who haven't. You don't have to make decisions on anything tonight. We're talking with gathering information, we're seeing what we can do, what needs to be done. We talked about it. We would, we have more meetings in the future, but tonight is not a decision making meeting, but it's open to suggestion meeting. Thoughts and ideas from everybody at the council as to how we can solve some of the problems that they may be facing. So. Let's start with Mr. Lawless giving us an overview of what we are looking at and what we need to think about.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd refer to, to start with, to the draft recommendation written up and shared a couple of times over the past few weeks with some preliminary staff work and feedback from the Government Services Committee. I, I think this tells the story of some of the, the situation that the town finds itself in right now and shapes the choices that are before us. Looking first to the, the legal framework and the calendar that we work with. The town's fiscal year starts on July first of each year. And we run that budget from July first until June thirtieth of the following year. We adopt a balanced budget. We take in the same amount of money that we spend. That can include a surplus that we save away for future years or a use of reserves if we find ourselves in a rainy day and have those. But we need to show total revenues equal to or exceeding expenditures. We target a timeframe of a budget public hearing in April so that there's time for the public to get informed about the budget choices that are before them. And then shoot for budget adoption in May so that the bookkeeping transition can occur and our audit can get set. Sometimes the budget is late, but it needs to be done by law before June thirtieth. The, um, some of our numbers are informed by the General Assembly's budget coming out of Richmond. They adjourned this past weekend without adopting a budget. That makes our forecasting a little bit harder. They will reconvene later in the spring. And they have the same budget deadline that we do. But every locality in the state is on a little bit more thin ice because they don't know for certain how much state revenue they'll be getting. For example, in police operating support is one of our lines where we need to know what the state is going to send us. We, um, when we finish this recommendation and advertise a draft, that's the council's proposed budget. It will communicate to the public what the maximum expected spending and the maximum expected tax rates are. The town council remains free after that point to adopt a lower budget with less spending or lower tax rates. But after we advertise a maximum spend in tax rates, we can't approve anything that's higher than that. So some localities will err on the side of advertising a big budget and then making final cuts to go lower because they don't have the freedom to go higher without calling another public hearing. The current budget that we're working under sometimes needs supplemental appropriations. We aim to stay within the adopted budget and complete all of the spending within our targets. And we're on track with that. In past years, we've occasionally needed to do a supplemental because an emergency project, something special came up. Or in the case of the twenty twenty budget with COVID, we made furloughs and cutbacks when the economy was in freefall. There doesn't seem to be anything like that going on this year. So the current budget is on track to finish okay. The purpose of the work session and the focus is for the upcoming year. The Federal Reserve has been acting strongly for the past year and a half to curb inflation by increasing interest rates. That amounts to a deliberate recession to cool off demand. Lending is harder, mortgages are harder, businesses see this. Folks are shopping less and we're beginning to see those impacts. So most economists are forecasting a mild recession in the next year or so. And that will impact much of what we do in Scottsville. So this is the anticipation of a cutback budget. It feels wise to plan for that kind of recession and then if it doesn't happen, if the economy continues to run hot or if this recession just doesn't impact the Charlottesville market as much, we'll be, we'll be in a position of good news and able to do more good things. But the recommendation before you assumes a tightening. And so this evening's conversation is about the best way to implement that tightening. One of the sources of that recession is a reduction in federal spending. COVID-related programs like the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act, the Inflation Reduction Act pushed an unprecedented amount of federal fiscal stimulus into the economy, several trillion dollars. It solved a lot of social problems, but also contributed to that inflation and overheating. The town received quite a bit of that general fund revenue to the tune of about six hundred thousand dollars over three fiscal years. And we used it to achieve a lot of good results in the community. No new funding like that is expected between the Federal Reserve's contractionary policy and gridlock in Congress. You don't look for those same kind of big spending bills to come out. So one of the sources in, you know, you see the, the town revenue and spending increasing over the years. It needs to come back down now to a pre-COVID level. Those were balanced budgets that the town adopted for many years and we can do it again. The sources of the town revenues, you know, go back to twenty nineteen. In that year, we didn't operate any federal grants. It was all state and local funding. The federal, federal funding, this orange wedge, came to be a pretty large proportion of our budget in twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. Now it's going down again. That's the main reason why we need to retrench. Before, local revenues have not grown enough. This is a pretty flat line. Business license, cigarette packs, bank tax and meals tax comprise about half of our revenue with just those four sources in a typical year. And while much of the economy has been heating up and other revenues have grown, these have not. So we need to tighten our spending and get back within our means. One of the drivers of our overall spending is our payroll. About two thirds of local government spending nationally is personnel costs. School teachers, police officers, utility workers, local government work is done by people and those personnel costs drive what we do. That's the case in Scottsville. In a few areas, we've added staff. We've also implemented solid raise and benefit increases to retain and motivate the staff that we have. You can see the addition of the DMV Select service, a service that we tried during COVID. It is not profitable and in none of our budget scenarios can I see a way to sustain it. So removing the DMV service is the largest source of cost cutting and the first big step towards balancing this budget. That's a difficult choice to make, but does seem to be a priority of town councils. So the, the summary of the situation is a revenue gap to address of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Even after the elimination of the DMV Select. Town council already made at last week's meeting a significant step towards closing about half of this gap by canceling the B dot sidewalk construction project. By delaying that, redesigning it and applying later, we, we remove a sixty thousand dollar capital spend from this one thirty-five. So we have about seventy-five thousand dollars still to negotiate and work with. The Government Services Committee met earlier this month with hand hammered out one possible solution to, to close this. They created seventy-eight thousand dollars of budget solution. You can see canceling a couple of grant projects like public art, reducing agency support, reducing pay raises from the recommended six percent to a more modest three percent. A few other choice items here between capital spend, agencies and a couple of revenue increases like increasing zoning fees, which hasn't been done in many years. So that exists as one possible solution package and might be a starting point for your discussion. Increasing the zoning fees, what it costs for our various permits. So, um, if I, if I might recommend, you know, council reactions to the work of Government Services Committee modifying this package. What you have before you is a balanced budget, but there are many different ways of going about that.
Matt, just a question. Just a question. It might be good to explain, since a lot of councils are new, just why we did the DMV in the first place, you know, as it goes, just kind of a little history of how that, why was that done? And then what the thought process would just publicly be helpful for people to understand.
Sure. In calendar year twenty twenty-one, we were seeing the effects of the COVID recession. Worried about the precarious state of the town finances and looking for new revenues. We wanted to diversify the town's revenue base, improve our community services and try to avoid tax increases. We made a research project of comparable small towns and found that many of them, neighbors like Madison, Remington, Goochland Courthouse operated these DMV select offices out of their town office. Charlottesville City Hall had just opened one that year. These were profit centers in those localities. They provided a quality community service, brought traffic to town and paid for themselves on commission rates. So we decided to try something similar. DMV at the state level encouraged chefs. They were adding select services. And the one in Dillon was closing, so it was good timing that we might be able to serve especially our Buckingham County neighbors with that service. Town council and staff.
Yeah, okay. So this was formally voted.
Yes.
And, and was the DMV, is that part of the COVID money that came in to support that?
I think it's fair to describe it that way.
So you, so it's COVID money, wasn't it?
The, the treasury requirements never obligated the federal funds to go like into their own savings account. It all mixes in our general fund. I think it's very fair to describe it as a COVID-related project. We did it during COVID to deal with COVID impacts. And it's not the sort of thing that we would have taken up prior to or without the federal aid.
One other question about, just to say, so in evaluating where we are, so to speak, understanding the DMV, how would you understand some of the shortfall? On the one hand, it would, you would think it takes a couple of years to get going. But on the other hand, did we get to where we thought we would or where we fall short of it? Or how would you explain in terms of what we achieved with it?
It, it failed to reach even a gradual or conservative level of profitability. It's, it's not on track to be profitable in its third year, which was what we had hoped. I think some of that comes from traffic location, you know, in comparing to peers that were located on Route twenty-nine. They had more of a traffic draw, high traffic areas than what we did being here on twenty. I think it also suffered from opening during COVID appointment regulations, health restrictions, DMV's own marketing push to do as much as possible online. And then the good press that customer service centers, main DMV offices got when they fully reopened to the public. Difficult timing. We've heard very good reports about the customer service at our DMV. Our staff has done excellent work, but just not at the volume and cost recovery that we need.
Is there, is there only one way of doing the DMVs? I mean, is there a way, I mean, that we don't have to manage it. We could just allow them to work here, but maybe the DMV could take more ownership and marketing and, and we would just allow them to use the facility, but they would be in charge of it. Managing it is very hard. I mean, it's something like that. It's really some marketing and some oversight and, and we don't have a staff or the you know, where we're all to do that. I just wondered if they would, I think it's a great service and I think, I just wondered if they would step up and, and go, go, go further.
No, sir. The, the contract arrangement is pretty strict. There, there are field offices that are contractors that are different from the DMV customer service centers in Charlottesville and Farmville. Maybe one way of thinking about what makes them effective is when those staff also do a lot of other things. So in, in Charlottesville, the DMV was added on to a treasurer's office, which was already very busy. So folks go there to pay water bills and city taxes. And there's a high level of traffic for everything else that goes on at City Hall. And we don't administer water bills or real estate taxes. So it's hard for people to get the DMV trip done while they're here for something else.
So we would, we'd not be in a position to ask DMV if we could do like three days a week with one in four.
They, they require that we be open more or less the schedule that we are. We can't cut it to halftime.
I think that has the potential to be one of our best assets for profit here in the town. And I think that if there is a way to make it profitable, it's worth keeping, especially since it was essentially painful with COVID money. It's not capital funding that we took out of our own budget. If we can make it profitable, something that we don't want to lose. I think it's just my perspective on, and especially coming into looking at his deficit. I think we should spend some time making it work and whether that's, you know, the staff we have over there now, or, you know, if we want to make a plan for them to, to make it profitable. You know, maybe, maybe we take a little bit of a loss on, on money and actually advertise for it, put it on radio, put it on TV and let people know it's here, but I'd like to see it. An attempt to make editing profitable before we let it go.
It's going to be over a hundred thousand dollars to run it. So. And then we, we have a balanced budget now on, on two to four. And I can't imagine where we would find.
What is the revenue that's bringing in, you know?
Got the, the state.
Eighty thousand because of the startup costs?
There was a, there was a construction cost like in purchasing equipment and motivating the office, but that's, that's mainly operations that you're, you're paying salaries and the, the deposit goes to the bank every day and it wasn't enough to cover the day's wages.
You know, I voted for the DMV and I thought it was a good idea and I still think it's a good idea. I think at the time was the still there building is closing. It would give us an opportunity maybe to get that part of, you know, of Buckingham County's revenue. And I looked at E W Thomas, I see where they, and the many, many times I've been in there, I've seen they have one employee that's dead. With COVID, they had to bring in a few more people to kind of usher everyone in. But basically they had one employee there and I don't know what other services they provided, you know, was they, they did any services, you know, for the county or not. And in fact, I wonder why the door still closed. Maybe it's because they weren't making money. I don't know. But, um, personally, I'll share a look to both of the sides of it. I was looking at the, at the, the additional revenue. Having said that, this contract we're in, is it negotiable? We receive a percentage of the revenue that is taken in here. Is that, is that percentage negotiable?
It's fixed in state law, which could change. I think that ratio has not changed in many years and I would be interested in explaining to the state DMV what all of our costs are and how, you know, it's, it's important that we do quality work and maybe we need a higher commission rate. If a number of us localities organized together, we might be able to change that, but it would require a state law change.
Well, we've got to do, do, to try to do that, we've got calls, but.
It might be next year's one, it's like this actually.
Doesn't fall.
Between now and June, is there things we can do to Alex's point to advertise or do something to see if there is a way we can increase profitability between now and then?
Quite possibly.
And then reevaluate, we can look at it right now and say we can take it out of the budget. But if we see the trends going up between now and June, then we can reevaluate to see if maybe we want to try to save it.
See what our month, month average has been until June. See if we can increase it. And if it's not looking like it's going to trend up, then have a more serious discussion or, or just totally pause it. Don't we have to lock in?
It'll have to be vague, huh, Jim?
Okay.
Now, the, the the office, as far as personnel goes, one person in the work there, of course, that person is out, someone else would have to step in. As town administrator, you can assume supervise those responsibilities and actually run that, right?
Yes.
So that would eliminate the need maybe for one employee.
We could, we could run it as a smaller operation, have one employee instead of two. They require quite a lot of double checking.
Right.
But, um, the, the clerk and I could provide that second set of eyes and satisfy the audit.
So, so what I'm saying, why there, we, what we really, what we need is someone in the office to answer the phones and so at least you don't have to stop what you're doing to call the public. And that person could be like the office staff and the DMV.
Or you could do like the Shawshank DMV does if they'll answer the phone. That's the truth. I'm sorry.
What we all heard is, you know, glowing compliments about the service at the office.
Well, advertising would help. It's my understanding. There are more, there are certain transactions that are more profitable than others. Retitling and things like that. And the ones that we mostly hear at the DMV office are not those.
Yes.
So is there a way, if it's reach other vehicles, can we reach out to other local dealerships and do some, you know, feet on the ground to see if we can get more of that business in here?
That, that was the advice of the DMV staff when we shared this problem because they, they do want to help us and, and help us stay open as part of their network. That, yeah, the, the sales tax on a used vehicle like trade is, is the best commission that we get. So working with car clubs and collectors or businesses that, um, you know, are moving their fleet around, adding trucks and trailers a lot, making sure that they feel welcome to come here. Things like classic car collectors make for some of the best commissions that we get.
And we have, if we, if Dillon is closing, then there's a couple of local dealerships up there.
They've been closed for years. We haven't gotten any of their business.
Another one here, there's one down closer near Avon. No, no, I'm talking about the car reach.
I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about a DMV select and bill.
The Dillon DMV is closing. They have a couple of small car lots. We could reach out to them personally and say, hey, we're here. It'll be maybe less distance coming to Scottville depending on the traffic than going to Farmville. We've been assuming there's probably going to Farmville. And then we have, you know, we have a couple of homes around. We could do outreach too, as well as the advertising. I don't know how much the advertising.
There's some tidling. You could get me on this that we're, we're not allowed to do.
Many, many dealerships run their DMV transactions in-house, but they, if you're, um, Price Kia, they, they, they don't, they don't need to come here because they're running it themselves. But like our, our local CNS, they're, they're here pretty regularly. This is a good, this is a good service for them. And so it's, it's that, right. It's that kind of deal.
The smart media wants to be the ones who do the outreach, the bigger ones. Isn't it, you know, they have, to your point, their own in-house processes.
I'm going to be honest. If we had this discussion six, eight months ago, I feel like these would be good ideas. I feel like, I mean, for all intents and purposes, we're in March, you know, damn, it's going to be March and we have to adopt. It would, right? It would, right? I I don't think. We have enough time. To tell if that would work and and I mean. You know, three years in a row, we're in the hole over a hundred thousand dollars for it. I I feel like that's a big risk for just too, I I I hate. For anybody to not have a job, you know, the the idea, you know, terminating two jobs sucks. And I I I don't know that two months is gonna be enough time to do that. It it would be.
What would it cost to restart it after, you know, if we wait a couple of years and kind of get in a better financial position, would it be viable to restart it after that?
Could could be. I think I think the state would be sympathetic to our situation and they they do want to grow and maintain that network. The the heavy lift of equipment and renovation has been done, so it's something that could we could get back under contract in the future.
Is that equipment of ours?
Yes.
So if we close all this startup that we put into it.
Computers, furniture, filing cabinets, we keep, yeah. So we've we've outfitted a a useful office. And so one question is, you know, can we do anything useful with that or should we try to dispose, sell that gear?
Well, I guess you have an approach, you know, D M V about this yet. Uh, if you were, can you say, can you just put it on the table and say, what could you do to help us make it sustainable?
Sure.
I mean, and then come back and let us know sound out.
Best in fine law.
If it doesn't pass most of them, you know, we may have to.
Is there, is there a sense of counsel about to to this idea of, you know, scale it back to one person and. Use use that worker as. Kind administrative assistant as well? Maybe we could shift some of our workload to them um. With the expectation that if there's, if there's not a D M V customer in front of you, you can help with bookkeeping or minutes or website updates or something like that.
It's a town leadership. Do we get information about how much we lost this year and or and what's our projected? Good month or we could have some sort of, I know, as I said, we all say costs last year, there's just eight thousand this period. That's.
Slightly better, but not much better. In the in the monthly report here, you have the. Um, the D M V revenue line on. Page five, which is um eleven thousand six hundred for six months. And the total D M V department spend is almost seventy three thousand dollars for the same period. So it's only fifteen, twenty percent replacement. It's not good enough.
So at least for now, I think we have to think about taking it off the table. That's a deep thought.
We got our decisions. Are there any other services that would be looking for office space of that or that we can lease to potentially? I don't know if there's a conflict with no town offering.
We can take tenants or or host um, host partner agencies who might want to be here. Um, it's a useful. Customer service point for anybody who needed to meet the public here. We rebuilt it with customer service and data security in mind.
We gotta do something important, if we do decide to drop it, then maybe make money off of office stays. Something, you know.
Just so I said, my point in bringing it up was actually not trying to, I don't know. A way to salvage it at the moment, I'd be reporting certainly, but it was more trying to understand the history of it. We have to make hard choices when I I think of our police officers as being something that matters a lot to me. They all matter to the town. It's just a question of. How do we address with our limited resources what we do and. What's the most worthwhile way to approach it and understanding the history that we were able to do? Matt, do you remember what the the cost of cost to get all the equipment and to start off what it was?
Neighborhood of forty thousand for the renovation and equipment. Primarily, that was office renovation. That had been a conference room before, so there was a carpenter's bill. To um demolish a wall, rewire it, run the electrical drops, um, replace doors and cabinets.
But that's all non-recurring.
Yeah, that's that's it's finished. Now we pay a, you know, a slight, a slight increase to the um. Utility bills for the space, but nothing else.
Well, let's, I would certainly like to see it stay with the best of. So all those decisions we'll have to make. About about May.
Um, I might, I might open the the related staffing conversation for the for the rest of staff. Um, that is the the next largest driver on this list. Um, on the on the spending side. Um, our payroll being the largest thing that we do. The tension, of course, is between, you know, competitive compensation, retaining the skilled staff that we have. And um where we need to be on budget. Um, I'm certainly the the first to volunteer that if market. Um, increases can't be given, my my percentage increase is the most valuable for you to cut. You should certainly do that first. Um, a couple of percent makes the most difference for our lowest paid staff. Um, you can do the same percentage increases across the board. You could tie it to performance evaluations or you could make it different by department. What are your thoughts on priorities?
My part, including this, we have a conversation about personnel. I may not talk to you guys, so uh, except for this, I'd be like. The staff, staffing here and about the the Vegas citizen and how to do that. Uh, I know there was a big race last year. And uh, you know, we might not go back pre-potent amounts. Um, but I I think that might be a conversation just for.
Are are you saying, when you say pre-potent amounts?
Yeah.
The salary reductions?
No, but well, well, that that will be that's more for. Or freeze the rate, freeze the rate, freeze the rate. And uh, and see what we did that the other year and then maybe just something like that rather than blocking the percent.
Well, if you're something about as well, um, there is a small. Budget given to the events and I had a pretty successful fundraiser. Earlier this year.
I could try to focus more on that and roll that budget back into, you know, helping the staff out or somewhere it's more. Because that is a nice little something for me to. Do some letting them focus on more. Volunteer based events and even like fourth of July, a fire department, I think that was a lot of it and music and stuff like that relatively, you know, cheaply. Some of the other.
I I certainly take take your point about the um. Sensitive nature of the evaluations. Here in the in the spreadsheets, you can be public about, you know, the total amounts. Or you can speak to the philosophy of, you know, merit versus cost of living or the total effect that you want to have on on, you know, the total amount of your spend. And then the specific decisions about individual performance and payments can can come later. Um, but it it. It it's a substantial budget impact, for example, on the police salaries, the difference between six percent and two percent is is thousands of dollars.
Actually, we're talking six, six to three.
Indeed.
You know, we we borrowed instead, we we got a valuable service with D M V, but in custody, we have to make them. Same with the police department, we all support them with their heart and soul and blood, sweat and tears and try to help them in any way. Have them. We can afford, you know, the pain increases, you know, we don't want to. To chase, you know, off another job and bring down, we certainly don't want to. To um reduce the force because it's proven that they're needed. But uh, it's sometimes and you know, to be here, they have, they have to look at it.
The other thing with the maintenance, we probably do about, you know, and make it at part time or make it into. Words, contract. And I think that might be a conversation to town council to have to see if we want to have a full time maintenance personnel, maybe at our part time one or or just to contract out of, you know. Like we do with a lot of things, you know, what we do with the bathroom. Anyways, conversation, I think, I'm gonna look at it.
That's relevant here. Your your streets and parks categories are where that personnel cost and the related supplies uh go. And for many of our services, you have the. Um, strategy of, do you want to deliver that service with? Town employees or do you want to run it on a contract structure? And almost everything we do, there is an option for for a company to contract it out. And sometimes we get. Better bang for your buck that way. This is a, this is a fair forum to talk about contracting. Any of the services that we do, or if there's something that we're contracting that you think can be done better by staff or bring it back in house.
As far as like maintenance, we've had, you know, maintenance uh committees, we also have maintenance companies. We had Bartlett, for example, do the trees and I don't know what they charge, but uh, with if they did it this year. I think I think we could skip a year. I mean, I, most people don't get their trees totally pruned every year, or maybe we could have. Temper down or they, we could get somebody who really knows uh, uh. You know, they could do mulching and they do a lot of different things. You could hire somebody to do a variety of things, because I know sometimes the. You get a somebody, an arborist, really, they would know more how to do this thing, say, uh, Bartlett, you know, just automatically do that. But I think they're expensive. I know I've had Bartlett and I don't know if you need to have them every year unless you really uh. Streamline that.
Well, the other thing I'm thinking of too is cost sharing. Is there a possibility of cost share that serves approximately owners to get a better price? If everyone feels it's absolutely necessary. Have we reached out to Levan and and Buckingham and say, what do they do? Can we jump on your contract for a bigger amount to get better savings overall? Have we tried that?
For things like landscaping?
Yeah.
Or even.
Any other contracting services, maintenance, anything? I'm sorry? Can we get in on their?
Big town employees would do that, yeah.
I don't know how they do it.
Yes, not contracted, their salary.
But we are part of Alamo County.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, but like in Albase Square is not a, like, there's the county parks department. Dory or Park is Cap Card. You know, I don't know if we can get them to come loan Canal Basin Square and.
If we cost share. Worth exploring.
We tried to call share with our whole family. Chief Jenkins is aware of this. Uh, we tried to come up with an idea to to share the fuel costs that have had a common tactic, if you will. Just like the fireworks open doors. Um, has that worked out to them? Very well, Alamo County doesn't want to share their their pump and there was even cost with Scottsville. Uh, and and just on a little tangent, if it hadn't been Buckingham County and Scott Monah let us deal. We would have had fireworks in the biggest day of the year because Alamo County did not issue the permits. So focusing with Alamo County on any type of cost sharing, uh, you're beating the other gets the wall.
Sometimes it's. New people get in offices and that's new faces, new relationships. Doesn't hurt.
We also used to do Bartlett uh trash.
Yeah. And then there's, there's also. Chief Jenkins, I had a question for you. Want to think, you know, in this six percent down to three percent. I think government services and it because of transparency actually said two percent. What do you think the effect on your staff will be if the raise or not? Is there going to be morale issues? Do you think it can be managed? What do you think?
It can be managed, even if if the town council can't give them this. We're very fortunate in the police department that the uh. The officers that we have working here want it. And, you know, they've made it clear to me that if the town can't give them an increase, then. Fine. Um, I just know I don't want them to go anyplace else, make more money than they are. Um, but I know like uh, many around the table have said, you know, as the budget is. As tight as it is this year, we may not have a choice. They just have to deal with all that.
Well, good to know if those hard choices need to be made, at least there's, we're not gonna have a huge problem. I mean, the things I'm reading in newspapers. Make it seem like this is a horrible, horrible thing. And the sense I'm getting around the table is it's just not quite as horrible as horrible.
I don't know if everyone's aware, last year I didn't get an increase. I didn't want an increase. And I don't want an increase this year. I don't expect an increase. I would prefer to see the increase to my officers than to me. But, you know, the the officers are satisfied. They are very happy. Uh, with the benefits that we've been able to give them with the take home cars. That type of stuff, so. It is what it is. I think they'll understand. I told them that we would uh have this discussion about pay. I couldn't uh guarantee any.
Well, and it would be good, I think, somebody mentioned it before, is if we have enough budget at the end of the year to give a bonus. Right? Sometimes it's better if you get a a small rate and then after taxes, it's, you know, it doesn't really amount to much. But getting this nice lump sum at the end of the year can actually be significant, so we should. Yeah, we should keep that on on the table in terms of looking forward in the next budget.
That is practical for you to do in June. If you get to the end of the year and realize that you've done well in some areas, that's a choice you can make.
Is that reasonable?
The only difference between bonuses and pay increases is bonuses don't go towards the overtime. Bonuses is a one time and that's the window.
Okay.
Not that it's not appreciated, I I just felt that it was important that council understood the differences. Bonuses don't go towards the overtime. Uh, increases in pay does go towards the overtime.
But if you had a smaller increase in pay, which does bump up the retirement, then augment with a bonus. That could be a potential solution to that. So let them know that we appreciate what they do, that it's critical they deliver. You all deserve a critical service, I think we all do. So I would hate to miss the opportunity.
Keep saying that, but I think our staff will be happy to find a way. So I know we we put a chunk of money into getting the pack boat back in shape this past year, but. Setting that aside, what is usually, what is their output per year average for maintaining now?
Five, ten thousand dollars. Um, you you always have. Uh, touch up paint, um, contract tree work, carpentry jobs here and there, plumbing repairs. Um, things like the sign replacement was done a few years ago and is due again.
Couple of years ago, we've kind of kicked around some of this, the idea of selling or giving an Albase Square to the museum. That would be all for our books and all their.
Government Services raised a similar point. I I have not had time to make this map, but um. It's a good question during this kind of cutback brainstorm of. Take a look at all the property that we own and if you sell a piece of land, you've got the one one time windfall of revenue. And then fewer maintenance costs ongoing. Um, you could look at that map and think, think through, what do we own? Maybe parting ways with some properties wise.
Are they interested in purchasing it? Would they be interested in leasing it?
We don't, Laura, I talked to previously about. The seller now is to the museum about whatever we did.
Does the. Museum have the kind of funds to maintain it? So five years, it it's five years of maintenance. My fear, just because it's such a great spot for tourists to information and, you know, everything else. My my fear would be. Ten years from now, would it be? Ten years from now, would it be? Canal Basin Square still, you know, continue to be maintained. No, and, and, and. It might, you know, like the, the museum might. Do a better job than.
That makes me think too, we talked a while back about that land in Buckingham. And potentially offloading that. I don't remember what it came to on that. I remember there's some issue with some potential uh, dump there or something like that. Could you put a contingency in the purchase of the land? You know, if you're going to purchase this, you have to take a, know whatever you need then, you know, check it out.
I have to talk with a Realtor about the contract options and, and our past practice has been just to log it on occasion and earn some ongoing revenue from that. And this, this might be a good time to do that. No plan for, plan for cutting.
Right, it was supposedly the whole town, you know, for the Doug Van Kelly, but uh. It was owned by the town, it was thirty six acres. Thirty four point six. It used to be thirty six point four, but then it's rough here. The, the properties of both sides got surveyed. That's, I guess, that's how we lost it. Lost two acres, two acres. Establish your uh, new clubhouse. That thirty four point six, sixty. What are?
Yeah.
About a birthday.
I think that makes better than can, than her to Canal Basin.
Well, I don't think we should do a cost share with that. Like, you know, we could do part, we could do part of, they could. We could do some maintenance and they could uh, they could. Just have Canal Basin Square or. I mean, going back to that too, we definitely need some, some of those barrels or some of that stuff and. I think that's our only tourist attraction in town. I think they need to be replaced or fixed, um. So it looks nice.
Yeah.
The boat looks nice. We spent too much, I think, on it, but the boat looks nice and uh. People, I see people there because I walk around, I see people there looking around, look the, the barrels. And, and some of the boats probably needs to.
Are they still on the boat? Those barrels?
No, they're, they're outside. Most were on the other side, but they've still got hold. I know there's interest in some of those, that actually Ron being journey asks me to chance or rather spend fixing the roads that we have or maybe just wait. And you know, you know, we can switch them off.
Or Chester fields do to be replaced and that can be a donation.
When Matt, the cost of maintaining Canal Basin Square, you said. Up to like ten thousand dollars that we have put in the past. Then does that come um, out of our uh, um, maintenance, uh, technicians? Salary or are we looking at that? Is he doing the handiwork? The plumbing, the grass cutting or, or what you're saying, it's ten thousand dollars? Well, if they're.
Um, if it's, I'm, I'm not, I'm not accounting for the staff time spent on site. So the, where we see additional spending is. For materials like, like paints or chemicals, or if we're contracting something like a um, a licensed electrician or um. That sort of thing.
But then that's something that will be a year ago.
No, no. So, so, right. So where, where you see it in the budget, we'll leave a um. A small contingency line in capital for Canal Basin Square repairs. We can specify on it if we know that we want to target something like signs and barrels. Um, but if something breaks unanticipated, it's wise to have a contingency in there so that um, you can, you can get it fixed. We prefer to do that work in-house if we do.
So this paper we have in front of us though, that. I just want to make sure it's clear, Matt, we should change this because this wasn't exactly the recommendations of G S C. So this has been edited, so it should say edited recommendations from G S C. And then this is a balanced budget.
Yes.
We've talked about some other things.
Yes.
How do we get, it would be nice to see the scenarios, right? Like several scenarios to say. Option A, we'll give it the balanced budget. Option B, slightly different, give this a balanced budget. Option C, right? To get us to that. Like, I don't know, without the access to these numbers, I don't know how to toggle those and do them myself, right? And I would like to be able to see those levers. Um, pulled in different ways to get to a balanced budget. And then I think we could make more.
And you had a three percent, what's it been, three percent?
That's right. And if it's negative.
And you got three percent, so. So what's the difference? But I like that.
With each one showing what the cuts are specifically and then how it gets to the balance.
Sure, tho- those can be um. Packages and of, you know, equivalent size hopefully.
Yeah, I think you have somewhere like this, like that has different numbers and different things to cut in it. Like there's been different. Things that we've talked about, but it might be helpful before budget decisions or maybe get those scenarios all planned out. And then say, okay, which one do you want to pull the trigger on? A, B, or C?
Right, right. Be um, ha- happy to do that. And we've, we've done. That kind of work in the past with different operational scenario changes. It'll, it'll be helpful as we conclude this meeting of, you know. Roughly, what do you think those scenarios look like? What kinds of cost impacts? Um, for example, a property sale plus contracting.
Right.
To see, okay, who's, who's where you want to see what's that work.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly. Cutting staff, moving to contract services. Two percent versus three percent. Um, raises for some staff, maybe not senior staff. Uh, what are some of the other things? Sale of potentially the Buckingham property. Cost sharing on certain things. These are all options that we've just spoken about.
Right.
And Matt, did you ever speak to the folks who bought the? I, and I apologize, this was not a council meeting. One time I was meeting with Matt about. The beautification committee and, you know, different things we were doing. And we're talking about the butterfly garden. And the state that it's in, and I'm going to be honest. At something that I think a professional needs to do. Like, you know, it's not a committee. Thing, you know, to, to expect people to make that butterfly garden as beautiful as it was a few years ago. But we kind of got a little discussion about. Selling the butterfly garden to maybe. Either the folks who bought the, the Mason building or. Did that discussion ever happen? That be interested in that?
That property owner does have some interest in it. So if, if that's on the table as something we could do, this is.
I know it's such a tiny piece of land.
This is an example, both the, the side yard and the parking lot behind it are not heavily used by the public. And they, what they amount to is the parking lot and side yard for that commercial building. Um, when there was a downstairs business in there, the primary user of the parking lot was that business, not the more general public. And so this is an area where we might, you know, subdivide it to keep our police station. And then try to sell the butterfly garden and the parking lot. And maybe that building owner would be interested. Again, windfall of revenue and one less thing to worry about on maintenance. If, if it's, if you feel like it's more appropriate as a private asset, you know, get it back on the tax rules and not a maintenance issue for the public. You can, you can think about that same kind of discussion with any small piece of parkland that we have.
Well, the only thing I would wonder though is, I mean, part of our. And forgive me for my ignorance on this one, but our sort of somewhat charter as a B city or things like that, or we. Does that change if we sell the, you know, something like that and don't keep the stuff?
I, it hasn't been kept up in years. I don't even know what's in there that would.
I think several years ago, I think this is.
Oh, several years ago. But it, it's. It's so overgrown. I mean, it, it's all used now with um. A few of us took a, a walk through. That five or six months ago and it just. Would require so much work. You would have to start over. It would have to be pulled up. Everything pulled up and, and we got, um, yeah, I don't know what's still in there that would constitute.
But there's no implication for us being a B.
They used to be in that business.
Right.
But that was a part of it. I would think we would want, I mean, just to say this in terms of that particular spot to communicate with the people in town who. Do care about it because there are people who do. Before we did anything, we would want their input. People who, who have worked on it on my side. I haven't, I don't know what it was.
Well, they may be willing to come up to the table and revamp it. But, but it could be thought of as part of the strategic aspect.
What I have run into with beautification, if I'm being honest, is. A lot of folks who. Are upset and don't want to be able to pay because what they did was put in. Hours and, you know, tens and twenties and thirties of hours into. The creek, into the butterfly garden, into everything. And within a few years, it just. Looks the, the way it looks now and um.
And there's no reason.
Feeling, feeling as if it, it was a waste of. And, you know, to, to donate thirty hours of time and then have it, you know. Not be kept up. It, it almost becomes a job to them. It, it, they, they put in all of this work. To make it look beautiful, but then it's also their job every weekend to go out and read it, oh, you know, do all these things and. And it's been very hard getting people willing to come back. You know, the beautification committee kind of. Went by the wayside for a few years. The first people that I contacted when I started the committee up again were the people. Who were on it before and had done it for everybody. Yeah.
And do you think, Mary, there's a tendency why that can be the new refrigerator?
The butterfly garden? Absolutely. Oh, just the, the committee in general? Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no. We're, we're doing things now on a much smaller scale than what it was. So, you know, some power washing, planting some flowers out in front of the museum. Um. It'll be larger scale once the, the weather gets better, but you know, taking care of the benches, redoing stuff. Well, once the spring comes, that'll be us, yeah. Um, and that comes into the V city thing too, but all the flower boxes, you know, will be. Like bee friendly flowers that get planted, but um. So, you know, so it's happening again, but it's a whole new committee. It was done, I think, on a much bigger scale than. Who was beautification committee before? Oh, I, I meant who was the liaison? Whoever it was, when it existed before, did it kind of on a much bigger scale, I think, than what I'm doing though.
Well, I think it, it does say that we need to do a better job of. When people do give their time and I know the top of the government services, they, several people. Everyone particularly, I think there's committed a point that we need to do a good job. When people donate for the time. To really make sure we recognize them and make sure that they know that they're valued.
You know, we all know the next three years kind of, we're everything out of whack.
Yeah.
And so we're just getting back to sort of, well. And uh. Maybe that we, you know, like, you know, for the. Couple of flower boxes.
They did a great job.
Yes, Bruce was sort of.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt. So another thing I was thinking about within this budget was. Kind of all on the same lines as the DMV was the format I did. And I really think it could be profitable. I haven't looked too deeply into it, but I know it makes a lot of money. If we could. Push to have, I maybe expand the, the slots people can park in to be vendors, maybe.
What's the vendor fee for that? What's the vendor fee for?
Two hundred and fifty.
For you? Now, I, I saw a vendor the other day there and, and he had a big old truck. And he's used electricity and I think he should pay more. I think we should raise that fee. Uh, that's one way against him, I think. You know, two hundred and fifty is pretty, pretty good. But especially if you use electricity, you know, the guy with the, who's uh, something. Kitchen or something like that. He was there all week, you know, you know, talking about, what's his name?
The, um, the, the baker or the, um. Yes.
I don't know. I just wondered. I saw, I talked to him the other day and he plugs in there. And I think well, that should be more than the one who doesn't plug it.
I, I think you have a, um. Economic signal, if a market's full and there are many interested vendors. And they, they are satisfied with how that's going, so that may suggest that those fees could be higher.
What is the ten thousand week pay? In, in expenditures, we have ten thousand under promise market.
Mainly the wages for the market manager. Um, that's a, um, a part-time, uh, you know, flat, flat pay on the month position for Ms. Walls for the market manager job. Uh, and then you've got some incidentals on uh, utilities for that space, water and electric. Minor repairs that don't fall into capital, but it's primarily the market manager's pay.
Yeah, I feel like that's a pretty low cost thing that we could generate some more money for town. Um. I'm not an expert in front of markets, but I feel like there's something we can look into that kind of. I don't know that that's anything to do with this, you know, conversation necessarily. And maybe you could charge less for those spaces. Yeah. Exactly. Towards the soccer field area.
And even the lawn, I mean, that, that lawn there.
The boots were blows there, you.
Man, yeah. How many vendor slots do we, and I'm sorry if you don't have the soft copy, you know, how many vendor spots do you have right now?
Roughly twenty, yeah. They, they put the sides in the center.
Yeah, I, I mean, we can, I mean, if we have people who are interested, who are a part of it because all of our slots are bowled. And there's no reason why it has to be under the million. It, it could.
It's not uncommon in your intent, right?
I'd be happy to brainstorm that with the market manager. I think we have a, a very motivated and dedicated employee there who cares a lot about local food. And would like to do more with that space. So um, I think that'd be an interesting conversation about the feedback from the vendors. What would help this thing grow and be more energetic and help the town?
I also know there have been conversations, one of the things I'd like to see more farmers. Farmers Monday, because sometimes they go in and it's a lot of crafters and it's a lot of food vendors, but there aren't a lot of farmers. I'd like to see some way that we can encourage the local farmers to actually be in there. And find another way to put the crafters and the food trucks on the outskirts. I think. I remember a while ago, we had a lot of farmers in there and that's like, they really hop in on weekends. And now it's still, it still gets a good crowd, but there's not as wide a variety of vegetables, organic versus. What's grown down south and brought up. It would be nice to see if you're true farmers.
Indeed.
Going back to Alex's, uh, common element, the parking area property. And I know we can't vote or shouldn't vote anything and I have town council meeting, uh, Kim. We go ahead and start exploring, sailed that property and I'm wondering. We've got two, I believe, only two realtors, the storefront in town. Uh, and both of them serve on the government service committee. Uh, would like to avoid any. Emphasis, you know, conflict of interest town, that's either the people that do the job in that town. Can we go ahead and start looking at that, that, that now?
Think I would need professional assistance on. Understanding how to go about selling that property. So, ye- yes, talking with a real estate professional would be a good, nice step there. If that's the sense of, the sense of council.
Whatever it takes to get the ball rolling, but you got it, but.
Where are we at with the logging? Like, would it?
It's about, it's about due. Um, council discussed.
I feel like let's log it one more time before we sell it.
Uh, it's a, it's a fair question, but both ways of. How saleable is this now and how saleable is it if we cut it first?
Can we ask our, our Realtors first?
Public sitting there is where the.
Okay, we can't call out to them.
They, they, they heard us.
I'm sure they do. Well, it would be nice to know about the property back though. It's just a question about logging versus not logging. That's my only point, not about.
A lot of logging companies, they're not just property, they're logging two years. So. We can explore some logging.
Sure, sure.
Oh, let me ask my other question, uh. Fortunately or unfortunately, I don't look at it, we.
Fortunately or unfortunately, I don't look at it, the the White House structure, the bank, the data property looks like uh, so that's almost gone. Has Tiger given us any indication of what they might think their first year's revenues might be?
I'm I'm ready to ask that again now that the work was started in earnest. I I think that um I think that new business will open in the coming fiscal year, whose budget we're discussing. So that will create a um probably a pretty good meals taxpayer. And you'll see that increase on a monthly basis. We always wonder how much these businesses take from each other, you know, will will other businesses that sell sandwiches see an impact? Negative impact from this, or is there a total sandwich market that can grow? So I hesitate to get there. Where I do put that expected revenue is um on this one contractor business licenses. I I can guarantee a couple thousand dollars from the construction business just from doing that. That and a couple of other minor construction projects that might start in town. The the general contractor buys a business license from us. So even if the business is slow to open, they built something and we get that. Precisely. They they paid uh, less than a thousand dollars, but it was a decent check for the renovation work that they did.
How about all those stories you know, it's all Mr. Dan's is alive instead of new business or instead of Mr. Dan's?
That's a um, that's fits within oh, I'm not sure about the business license. I will ask about the business license. It it's by right on the commercial lot. I need to ask him if he's got it spun off as a new business or not.
What are you gonna do with that? I mean, I saw a story going in and.
It it remains, you know, the the for sale sign is still on it, but um the the display sales that are there are a a permitted use, but I think the underlying property remains for sale.
So he's gonna sell shares?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No, no, those 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 could be yours.
What's the rental fee for that?
We have a um, we have a lease with Stan. Um, they're they're our tenant. That lease has been negotiated on some different rates over the years based on how how much council would like to subsidize or help scan. Uh, I think the highest that it ever was was six hundred a month when they were subleasing themselves to Atlee Church. So Atlee paid Stan and then Stan paid the town. We we reduced it during COVID and I proposed to increase it back up. Three, four hundred dollars a month is something they.
We're gonna go back to the regular level.
Yes, yes.
How much the the regular level is?
Um, it was six when they had the tenant. They can, they can support three or four hundred a month without a sublease. Um, so you see rental income as one of your budget lines. Primarily, that's the cell phone tower in Van Cleve. But the downstairs space and then occasional rental fees for Canal Basin and the farmer's market gets you to the rest of that revenue.
I have a question. The um budgets written both of these, um, the government services and the other one. The increased meal tax, are we seeing that in locals to the town? Are are we seeing that in revenue?
Oh. Thank you for, thank you for getting to the rather the elephant in the room. Uh, it's it's the biggest change in this, and that is a tax rate increase, not an increase in business. We're not expecting the sales are.
I didn't mean business, but is that what I said? I meant tax rate.
Yeah, yeah, no, no tax. Um, the the town increased from four percent to four and a half percent several years ago. There are still quite a number of localities around us that are at much higher rates, six, eight percent in some of them. Um, I do not, do not see a good way to balance this budget, keeping the tax rates that we have. So to to close this gap, we look at the meal tax rate increase. The sixty thousand dollars of new revenue comes from an increase from four and a half to six percent.
Are we seeing that on here?
That is in both, it's in both versions.
Sixty thousand is on here.
It's in both versions. So that's, that's the largest contributor towards this solution. Um, the the difference between two percent and three percent and six percent raises doesn't fill the gap. Um. Buying fewer Christmas lights doesn't fill the gap. Sixty thousand dollars of the eighty thousand dollars solution is a meal tax increase.
And just to be clear.
And we actually talked about five point five percent, right? I thought we talked about Alba Mar being six percent.
Yes.
And we have recommended at GSC, we have at least talked about five point five to be just under.
If you do five point five, the new revenue is forty instead of sixty.
That's one of the scenarios we could look at. This is kind of what we did the last time we increased. Just a little bit. We have a little.
Six percent is about half of what most people bought.
Hey, do you have a calculator? Yeah.
I just, I'm gonna throw some numbers at you if you have a calculator. Okay, so say I had a thirty eight dollar bill at a restaurant. What would my, what would it come to with a five and a half percent tax, meals tax?
That's twenty one cents of local tax.
Is so my thirty eight dollar meal would just be twenty one cents with a five and a half percent?
Yes.
Okay, what if it was six?
Twenty three cents.
I think for two cents for a twenty thousand dollar difference in the budget. I I bought for six instead of five.
Talked about and some people on the on government service committee did recommend six.
Yeah.
One of the thinking was should we really, we pay for Almar, should we do, would it be more just five if they just under Almar? So there were two things, and maybe in the scenarios, these levers or levers take it one at five point five, if you have a way to make it up. Let's say if you sell the button here property, is there a way to make that up instead?
I I mean, on a thirty eight dollar check that it it literally is two cents, but it's twenty thousand.
So long, you're.
Yeah.
There to other areas.
The thing to think about to do with that is that um, Almar does have different forms of so just thinking about that, it could actually be higher.
I I'm for twenty thousand dollars more in our budget, I'm totally willing to pay two cents more on my.
Is there a point for that impact on businesses though?
I don't know for that amount. I I mean, I think thirty eight, thinking that's, you know, like a dinner. A lot of real staffs.
You know, there's all this outcry about, oh, the body's gonna make how many, you know, it's now four and a half percent, you know, and it seems slow.
Yeah, my, that's my question, that question of, and for my, was it pre-COVID? Yeah, that was pre-COVID. And then since then, um, of course it took a loss and and we knew they had to bounce back and it done very, very well, all all the restaurants and businesses, I think. Now, now we're post-COVID and we've got, you know, the prices of everything going up. Not only what I put on my table at home, but what they put on a table in town, uh, plus labor costs, so some of these thousands standing five people to work and can't keep them. So they're going through a lot right now. And it's 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 not that the restaurants are against the taxes, I think. I think the argument last time was, they just didn't want to, you know, show these prices going up, you know. Yeah, uh, as far as their call, because that, that, you know, that tax would be paid by them.
You know, part of it, it's not paying that tax.
Part of it supporting the business. A lot of these are local, they're not like the, you know, chainsawers.
True.
The local people live there and it's, they're showing that we're supporting them.
But we gave them a break last time and I was bummed of it. But but right now, if we are, you know, in financial trouble, that I could go to the well, give me a timeout, that may be the well I go to, it's all going around.
I may be saying, pardon me, this is the last time, I'm lucky to be between four and a half, five, which I would have to do. And, you know, it it made like two cents.
And last year we voted not to do it at all. I mean, I mean, we chose not not to, at least at all.
But the restaurants would have to deal with the decision because it showed that we came to a compromise, but maybe we don't have you know, the ability to compromise anymore.
I think, you know, six percent, five and a half, six percent is.
I don't think anybody would even notice.
No, they don't.
So when.
Nobody's complaining about the charge of two percent, we use it a twenty five percent, we're using a thirty four.
Yeah. Do you saw the calculator app? What's it, if it was thirty eight dollars, what is it now at four and a half percent? I I want, I just, I want to give the numbers, sorry.
That's, so that same ticket now at four point five, you're seventeen cents.
Okay, so it's going from seventeen cents to twenty one cents to twenty three cents. Honestly, if I'm in a restaurant, it would never even occur to me that that went up. I I would not, I I wouldn't notice it.
You don't think you know it really is.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I wouldn't say last week I paid seventeen cents, now it's twenty three and it could be twenty one, you know.
Well, I think.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think it would affect too many decisions. And people's decision to eat out might be affected by the fact that they don't want to pay thirty eight dollar bill when they could get something for ten bucks food line. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna be affected by seventeen, twenty one or twenty three cents on tax.
That's what you asked about, right? More just about optics and letting the business owners know that we're sort of on there.
So I think the business owners know too that that tax revenue, like it's working in a food industry and I don't think.
Uh, we we go to digital decimal places on those tax.
Six percent, it sounds like, okay, I'm fine.
Just a little tangent, um. I think the eggs of the food line and the jumbos are something like six ninety nine.
Yeah, they are. I just said last night.
Oh, I think four oh nine for the one for for white eggs.
In in the war ravaged country of Ukraine, where the eggs are fresh, never frozen, they're two dollars a dozen. So think about.
Even now.
Now, yesterday. So take, something else is going on, maybe all the chicks have food, I don't know. Just want to throw that out there.
Well, we we can also look at the fact that, you know, inflation is at the highest it's been in years, but also price gouging is different than inflation. Corporations are also making more money than they need in years. So I don't know if this is inflation or price gouging, but
What about the the lodging tax and raise that? What's the fee for that? Is it eight percent? We can raise that, but those people are just, you know. They don't contribute something to our businesses.
Um, that that had an increase from five percent to eight percent last year.
Okay.
Um, and.
Was, you know, with Almaral?
I think we matched Almaral at the eight percent last year, but I'm not certain.
Let's give a look at that.
Yeah.
I got six or seven or ten Airbnb industry.
That that industry has grown. That revenue line performs a lot better for us than it did four or five years ago because there are more of those users than there needs to be. Um, and the um routine collections, Airbnb has gotten a lot better to work with in particular, so they're they're sending monthly tax revenue, so the collections are less of a problem than they were.
So we get that revenue from Airbnb, not from the individual?
Yes, there was a state law changing how it's collected, so for for those third-party booking systems, Airbnb and Verbo, for example, um, when you, when you click book, you pay the big company. And they send us a monthly collection of the whole thing, instead of us having to talk with each property owner every three months. And sometimes they delay it or it's difficult, um, accounting. So I I think it's an improvement, but I'm still a little worried about the kind of making sure that the international company really knows what's going on here. Um, I'm not sure if I didn't like it better when I could just talk to the local business owner and say, how how are things going?
We have no way of tracking that, given.
It's.
Like, we we don't know what Airbnbs are full. Like, you you don't know what is full every weekend or empty every weekend. So we only know what we get that.
Unfortunately, yeah, the the report that the big company gives us is not itemized by which properties and how many nights. It's just, here's your check. So I don't.
We are out of bounds by asking the property owners.
I have encouraged, because I I'm not highly confident that what we're getting from this international company is correct. So I'm encouraging all of our property owners to keep their receipts. So if we ever needed to audit this, they could tell us, here's how many people stayed. And if we needed to basically go back to our paper system and they file quarterly, that they'd be prepared to do that. Because.
Do we, we have that option of saying we don't want to get it from Airbnb, we want to get it from the property owners?
I I haven't heard that part of it yet. It was a state law change that said the the booking entity has to be the one to pay. So they responded to the state law and did it. I I don't know what would be involved if we said, basically, we don't, we don't like this system because it's poor visibility.
Had that started?
It has, we've started getting the checks from the bookers.
How long? Okay.
Three months.
I think since October, it was our first one percent of taxes that we did on that.
It's eight percent.
Is there any way to get offer like a reduced tax rate if someone was kind of upfront with? I don't know, I'm just a general.
So far, I mean, they, the the local business owners share some of the confusion and frustration about the big companies and they've been it has not been a difficult ask to encourage them to save their receipts.
Yeah.
So um, I think they'll, they'll be good, good partners on this. They they find their third-party difficult to work with too.
So therefore, it really works out as a convenience for the person that wants to book a room.
It's easy for a traveler compared to, you know, going to the Yellow Pages and calling a bed and bed. But it's less helpful for us.
I don't, I don't have to call ten places in Virginia Beach. I hit a button over. I'm in sunshine.
Yeah.
Yeah, so is is all the COVID, uh, or the stimulus packages, that pleaded all that, uh, money from the stimulus that, is there anything left in that? Or we haven't spent it this year? I mean, I don't know, I don't know the stipulations.
It it exists as revenue and spending in the current budget and the past year's budget. And and like I, like I said a minute ago, it's it's not something that we put straight in the savings account and it mixed with the general fund. And because of the small size of our town, the federal treasury is not asking for any itemized report of what did we spend every single dollar on. It's general operating support. So we used it to do everything that we do. And we had balanced budgets in this year and last year. So I think the fairest way to describe it is we used it through those two years and now we're back to normal.
Okay, clear. And I know we used a lot of that, and certainly not very wisely, just like the rest of the country, but is is there any other? Do you foresee or has anybody perceived any capital expenditures? Uh, this looks a pretty good repair, I guess, but uh, well, I know we need a few things at the the canal basis square and maybe the climate market, but I mean, is there is there other uh, expenditures that we might need to do, like? You know, big ones next year. Or and fifteen point thousand or something.
I'd love more work at Canal Basin Square, the barrels.
Yeah, but I'm talking about this building's in pretty good shape.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any, any? Have you seen anything on the infrastructure bill that was passed by Congress? That would benefit us in the future? As to how we would apply budgets from that bill or something, it might be.
I, most of it does not go directly to entities like us. Um, it provides tremendous help at the state level. Things like for um, V dot major road projects, highway projects, or expanded M track service. But those go into V dot's project budget. And then they run the same kind of applications that they always have, where we might apply for a sidewalk program. And it's pretty competitive, but because of the infusion of federal funding, it's less competitive. So a project that we applied for where we might not have won the award, now will win the award because the pool is bigger. Um, but it's not cash in hand help like we got in the past where here's some money, go fix your sidewalks. Doesn't look that way.
And then it's such bills, one point three trillion.
That's it.
And only eleven percent of that is the actual infrastructure. The rest of it is social.
And only eleven percent of that is the actual infrastructure or else of it is sold to programs.
Oh, really?
Quite, quite a lot of other things, things, things like, um, uh, help with energy efficient appliances. It's, it's great if you're buying a refrigerator, but we're not buying refrigerators.
No, it's in the town, I think Warren Street really needs, I don't know if that's on their, I think Warren Street's one of the worst streets in, in the town area, that, that part of town, I think. I'd like that to be advocated for, if that one is there.
Unfortunately, the chief has gotten some of those automobiles parked halfway out in the street, appreciate that.
Can I, a nice suggestion?
Okay, all you wish.
Chief Jenkins has been on duty about seven days straight, I'd like to see him get home, do we have anything else to address for him?
Just tell us how you tripped in North and South Carolina, we got a car. We got a new car. Thanks to, uh, the, uh, head department, the next grant. Officer Wood and I went down, making order of the business, picked up the, uh, new police car Saturday and traveled home. Sunday, we had to make a pit stop in Roanoke to be able to, uh, drop it off. But, um, it's been delivered to Roanoke and it's sitting in the garage and they're ordering the, uh, equipment for it. Seems like they're a couple of months.
They don't have a hard detail?
No, it all depends on availability of the equip, equipment. Had to go all the way to South Carolina just to get a police car, ordered one here and they couldn't give me a delivery. Anyway, I think it cost us maybe three hundred dollars to drive down and pick it up and come back with it. Or if you have it shipped, we gave Fox a couple of thousand.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you've done, all you are doing and, uh, appreciate you being here to like make comments towards the budget. So home, Mr. Rest, what's wrong with you?
Thanks, Joe, thanks.
Good thing you all will have a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Other questions, other comments, or suggestions?
You have one, uh, this from the county, our revenue line, is that all that we get from the county every year?
Yeah, the, the primary source there is a, um, contract agreement for flood control maintenance that, that dates back several years and sets up a formula for, um, inflation adjusted county support for our flood control programs. We provide them an annual report of our flood control maintenance activities, mowing, inspections, repairs and the like, and that's, um, that is the one good example of, we both have an interest in this service because this infrastructure protects millions of dollars of the county's taxable real estate, they have a shared interest in the flood control. So there's a, a contract memo that sets up a payment schedule and what our maintenance obligations are. Um, that provides maybe a path forward for how we might work together on other services where the town does work, but the county clearly benefits from.
And you have just, you don't, I, do you have a good idea of what the county kind of, uh, pulls out of Scottsville as far as property taxes?
Sure, um, say, it, it's an older assessment figure, but seventy million dollars of taxable real estate in town and a county tax rate of point eight five four, six million dollars a year. Um, that funds county schools, county parks, county policing, all of the services that they provide.
Okay, like I said, it's gonna, I was wondering what kind of the, uh, if they would be willing to, excuse me, take a little back to this, you know? Which I doubt they would want to, but I, I'm impressed with that.
Excuse me, that's not right.
Well, does anybody remember when that email came in from her? She sent us an email not too long ago showing that like kind of per capita, you know, we complain a lot about what we get from the county, but we try to get more than everybody else?
I beg your pardon, I'm, I'm all for zero in that number that I gave, six hundred, six hundred thousand a year, totally, total town resident tax payments on that, um, seventy million dollar tax basis.
Well, if you remember the other night she was, you know, telling figures about what Scottsville had received and I swear, uh, that's not the town of Scottsville, that's Scottsville district, I mean, anybody must get that impression? Well, that's always been a question in the middle of your, uh, looking, uh, thinking about the town, she may be the other way, um, and when you said six million, I was like, oh, there's no way where, you know, costing the county that much, you know, six hundred thousand is probably, I don't know.
But that's still, I mean, it's not, it's not a significant number.
And I don't, I don't want to see this levy of property taxes if it don't happen, that's.
I feel the same way. But it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that based on these numbers, we can actually get to a balanced budget without doing that, is that correct? So if I get stopped on the street and somebody asks me, oh my gosh, the sky is falling, I can in good conscience say we have a way to a balanced budget, correct?
My, my summary statement is, it requires some priority setting and the meal tax is our biggest source. So it's difficult to do with no tax increase, but the sky is not falling, it's a pretty straightforward math problem and we can maintain our priorities. Tighten our belts and get this done, yes.
Can there be something to be done to manage that in the press?
Yeah, really.
That press is really negative about the town.
I know, I told something about that too.
It makes us all.
We're going back, you're setting our boat, I think it's, it's good for us.
And my fear walking into this is somebody's going to stop me in the coffee shop, because they don't.
I know, somebody told me that, the town's all under, it's one of the songs.
Yeah, right.
It's really, uh, I mean, it's, we're going back to what we always expect our belts and approval and, and that was, that was.
So is there a way we can do that in the press, have a follow-up article?
If, if, if this meets your general approval as an approach, I can publish that recommendation with a press release that describes, here's the scenario, you know, same way that I introduced it this evening. This is, this is the journey that we face, restoring a pre-COVID level of services, anticipating a national recession, being well-prepared for that, avoiding a general real estate tax increase and maintaining the services that our residents care about.
And I think they all.
This is about deduction and services.
No, and also they should know that we've got a car wash coming, and a void day, and we got eighty houses in the next several years, so, you know, we're, we're growing. You know, it's not like we're, it's a feeling sometimes like this.
Yeah, and, and, um, Ms. Price, she had that sort of impression, you know, like, didn't she get that feeling, Mr. Man, that she said, Scottsville's not growing, the losing population, is it that she wasn't aware of the, and you make a very good point, Mary. Bit of breakdown, by the way, for those two, about your summary, about, you know, your voting, you know, what you were actually voting for or against, but is that, is, is that just a misconception or something?
According to the county in the nineties, our population is two hundred and ninety. So how anybody can say we are going, yeah, and I mean, I, I looked at the county website, I was like, is that typo?
The boundary adjustment.
And it really doesn't matter, it's about the, the businesses around here.
But, but that's been to with the boundaries, like, aren't, because of what our boundary is, I hate to say that our population doesn't matter, but our small businesses, our, you know, you know, when we're talking about meal tax, you're not getting that from the five hundred and something people in here, we're getting that from as much.
Fifteen thousand people.
You know, Dylan and Buckingham and Fuada. It, it's not this crisis that everybody makes it seem like.
Correct that and say that we can't over it, it's manageable, it is not a crisis.
Yeah.
And there's actually potentially a lot of opportunity for Scottsville. I'd like to see something a little bit more inspiring than what was written.
And they pick, there's an article.
You're looking at me like.
They, they picking shows at that last, uh.
I'm, I'm Pollyanna, Dan, what's the problem?
I will say that's true.
That you feel I'm Pollyanna as well, yeah. Well, I'm an eternal optimist, I believe in possibility and I think it, it's a leadership objective to, I mean, listen, I think we have to be transparent, if there's a crisis here, we should be transparent.
I think this is a real problem, thanks, careful prudent spending, you know, re-improvement, and we're, we're resilient, we're managing a, a downfall, overspending with COVID and all that, I think we're, you know, we come back every year, we do that.
So can you explain what you feel on being Pollyanna here?
Yeah, well, it's not that complicated, so if you look at what we've done as a town, so the census doesn't lie, the last two drops, we've had significant population drops in the last twenty years as a town. We made a poor decision recently with what we should do related to.
Well, that's, that's a baby.
Absolutely, I just am saying it's a poor decision.
From Dan's point of view.
I don't think we've planned for the future and as we think about the budget as we're talking about where we are as a town, because we've made the decisions that we made, you know, one of the things you might not realize, there's a whole lot of people that aren't very encouraged about where the town is right now, and so some of that is actually very well represented in those articles, there's a lot of people that are discouraged about where the town is at the moment and that discouragement is something I share and I, I'm trying to be optimistic about the future. I do think we made a really poor decision as a council and I think that aspect of the future, I agree with you, I want to be optimistic, I'm hoping there'll be a better time in the future.
You know, you might talk to different people, because I, there's, I can't tell you how many people have come to me and said, I am so glad you did not do that, uh, and those are the people that I live by, I live around my way, they said, we would have so much traffic, we would.
That's the street now.
I, I just want to say that, okay?
The only thing I will point out, and I, I absolutely respect that, I would feel differently, and I think that's, but I think when we, as, as a leadership team, we should make sure that both sides are represented fairly, right?
That was my entire goal for, in fact, I will, I do.
That was a really negative.
Well, well, I feel like, to be fair, I don't think, in terms of good public policy, that didn't happen in what we just did, and whether it went one way or the other, that's totally fine. The process of good public policy was not fostered by this council and it was so much not fostered by this council, but one of our council members resigned over it. And I will say that directly, that.
Why?
With times that I.
Budgets.
The reason we're talking about it is because she asked me a question.
Okay, but, but. We get.
And I responded.
But it was more about, this is not a crisis, I think it needs to be addressed.
What I'm gonna do in the morning, Dan, you can be here.
Um, first thing, first thing, but not, uh, later in the day.
We'll work on some press, a press release and, uh, send it to all my contacts in the media.
That would be, I think that would really go. I think that would help reassure, that would help reassure the community that, you know, they're, they're okay.
I didn't, I didn't get to see it, I'll watch it on TV.
You look good.
Yes, you have to, you have to look at the whole news test when you're doing something. The one that was on twenty nine, um, I told her, I said, when the article for the, uh, Scottsville tomorrow, it's going to be worth, maybe, it was a month ago. It was three weeks ago and things changed a lot in three weeks.
Yeah.
And I said, and I explained to her that it's not a two hundred thousand dollar deficit that we're looking at, it was a hundred and fifty and now it's down to sixty. You know, so we're moving in the right direction and you know how news, news people are, they'll take.
Oh, yeah.
And, and that's what she was, that was about all the time.
But when it comes out like that, you know, people do watch it and they see it and they form their own.
I got some good comments on the, uh, Scottsville tomorrow, and the national, national publication that deals in small towns picked that one up apparently. I'm gonna get another review, let me tell them how.
I got the invitation from, um, um, folks you're talking about and I'd be fine, because they cheer the pit. So, and you know what my opinion would have been.
So as far as I know, we have several routes that we can go.
Yeah.
Do you think by the next work session, we'll have kind of a, a breakdown?
I have another, I have one more question before we go. Uh, can we get, uh, like more information about the Caldwell fund? That's been there forever and is there a stipulation on that, has, has it grown when we, when they would use it last, can we use it? Can, say we say goes up, the county goes up and we then grows to two hundred fifty thousand, can we take the twenty-five thousand out and, and use it for, you know, bonuses or something like that, I mean, is there a?
Answer your question. Because I was, I was all counsel when that happened. And the Caldwell's, uh, Ray died first and then this Caldwell died second, she died, family gave church like four hundred thousand dollars, maybe almost like four hundred thousand dollars.
What's my value?
Two hundred thousand dollars, you know, something like that, whatever they are, you gave it to the church. And we have counsel voted to kind of use it as an emergency fund. So when we did streetscape two, when we needed to pay some bills, Mayor Grove, you were administrator and, and correct me if I'm wrong, when I remember Mayor Grove, we, we took like a hundred thousand dollars about the Caldwell fund. And then when we got reimbursed by VDOT and some of these things, we paid for our advance back in there, so it's kind of like, I don't want to call it a slush fund, but it's an emergency backup fund. And we can use it for anything we want to, but we try not to touch it to sort of be there, like having your savings account in the bank, you know, yes, sir.
It was used exactly that way, in other words, if the town had to pay everything and then get reimbursed afterwards, it was only used for that reason and it was all for that.
Yeah.
So, so we got to keep it like that all.
You don't have to.
It's, it's our, because that's streetscape one.
Probably good practice.
Yeah, but it's lost money this year, right?
We, we have it in a, in a bond fund and when interest rates were rock bottom, it was earning very little. The one upside about the Fed's actions, now we're earning real interest on our, on our savings accounts from the bond funds that they're in. They don't lose principal, they're not invested in the stock market in a way that they can lose value. There is no legal string attached from the Caldwell request. It could be used any kind of way, but the spirit of it is, as the, the mayor described, for the permanent benefit of the network.
Maybe I'll do that in the end.
Thank you.
First suggestion, unless we go to questions, that we, uh, two weeks from tomorrow, we have our work session, then we have our council meeting and then maybe the last Monday night in, in March, we'll get together again, talk a bunch.
True.
That's all right.
I met some of those scenarios that.
Yeah, I gave you a month to, wouldn't give you anything you need for the past year.
Yeah, I have one quick question and maybe it's typo. The post-government services committee meeting, um, budget has three thousand less from the state, how?
It's, um, grant revenue, when we, when we cancel the public art project, we spend three thousand less, but they give us three thousand less. The total spend goes down by six thousand, but it's less out the door and less coming in, it helps us, but it also reduces some revenue by saying we don't want this grant. Good, good eye.
Um, and we don't really know what that's going to be until general assembly meets again in the spring, is that right?
That, that funding has been pretty, pretty reliable, we've used it, um, three different years now, um, working with Stan to deliver the public art. I think that part of the state budget is pretty safe, but.
So what are we waiting on in general stuff?
Um, things like the state revenue category for police, uh, police assistance, fifteen thousand dollars or so, that's always a hotly debated percentage, so it could go up or down by a thousand.
And that would still be from the state revenue?
It's still from the state, it's not a huge change, it matters much less than for places that run school systems where a percent of local aid can mean millions of dollars.
Any other questions, comments? Thank everybody for a good meeting.
Absolutely.
Good choices, we're forcing good choices in.
Thank you all very much.